Hello, Mike Akko, and good afternoon, everyone. Mahalo for joining us today. This is for the AEN 1 o'clock hearing. It's Wednesday, March 27, and we're here in room 224. And video conferencing, which includes audio and video of remote participants that's being streamed live on YouTube. In the unlikely event that the hearing is cut short, the committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business on Monday, April 1st, 1:00 p.m., here in room 224, and a public notice will be posted on the legislature's website. And because of our 90-minute time limit for the hearings, there'll be a one-minute time limit for all testifiers, and we'll have a virtual countdown timer on the Zoom screen, which is right here in front of me. So you don't have to turn around and look there. We've got it there. So we'll start off with SCR 52 and SR 40 requesting the Board of Ag to conduct a study on the percentages of agriculture lands being leased by the state that are suitable for farming and actively being used for farming purposes and certain dollar amounts relating to lease transfers. And first up is Jacqueline Ambrose. She's in support of Department of Ag.
Good afternoon, Chair. Members of the committee, do we have somewhere on Zoom to testify? Brian, call.
No.
No.
Okay, thank you. Sharon Hurd, Department of Agriculture. The department respectfully opposes this measure as the department lacks the resources to undertake the study and it represents an unfunded mandate. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. Brian Miyamoto, Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Good afternoon, Chair. Members of the committee, Brian Miyamoto here on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. You have our written testimony in support of the two resolutions. We do have a request for an amendment that the resolutions be amended that Department of Agriculture, rather than the Board of Agriculture, conduct the study if the study is, if these resolutions move forward, that it be the Department and the staff versus the Board that does the study. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Glenn Cagamita in support. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Members, any questions? Okay, what we're going to do is take a recess on the 1 o'clock AEN. We'll do that now. Darnell, okay?
Sounds good. You don't have to count down back in.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, so calling to order the 1 o'clock joint with HRE, Higher Education Committee. We have one item on the agenda, SCR 20 and SR 12, requesting the University of Hawaii Economic Research Organization to conduct a study on Scope 1, 2, and 3 greenhouse gas emissions. And first up is UH.
Hello, Chair and members of the committee. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. I'm McKenna Kaufman. I'm representing UH Manoa as well as UHERO, and we stand by our written testimony in opposition to this resolution. But I want to emphasize that it's in part because UHERO, in collaboration with Institute for Sustainability and Resilience and ICF, already conduct a greenhouse gas inventory for the state, and this is through the Department of Health. We do that greenhouse gas inventory annually. There's another one coming out soon, and it's within best practices for inventories. The requested Scope 1, 2, and 3 inventory within this resolution, in my opinion, is really much more appropriate to institutions rather than whole jurisdictions. Thank you.
Thank you, McKenna. Chris Caulfield from the Democratic Party of Hawaii is in support. Angela Melody Young in support. Paul Bernstein on Zoom. Aloha, Paul.
Aloha, Senator Gabbert, Senator Kim, members of the committee. I'd just like to say I'm also in opposition of this. I support everything Dr. Kaufman said. I'd also like to add that this resolution, I don't feel, makes any sense, given that even if the data could be gathered, which are extremely difficult, that Hawaii doesn't have the authority to enact policies that could take advantage of anything they learned from the data. This is really a national issue. If the federal government wanted to do it, I think that makes sense, but it makes, to me, it makes absolutely no sense as an individual state that cannot implement any national trade policies due to our U.S. Constitution. Mahalo.
Thank you, Paul. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Members, any questions?
Question for UH. Were you able to have a discussion about this with the Chair when you were presenting the senator that introduced this measure?
I have not, no.
Is there a reason why? You folks would want to explain that you've already been doing it when you started this all?
Well, I think that Carl Bonn, with the Director of UHERO, he did reach out, particularly in the House resolution, and I'm looking at Kim because she's been managing some of the communication. And so I do think there was communication in terms of the House resolution, and I'm unsure in terms of the Senate.
Okay, yeah, because it would be helpful that you see this if you folks are already doing it and so forth. You might want to let the author of the resul know.
Right.
Thank you.
And McKenna, I've got a question. So UHERO is currently working on, according to the testimony, updating the overall state inventory for 2020, 2020 and 2021, and this latest inventory should be available soon. Can you give us an idea of what "soon" means there?
Sure. So this is in collaboration with ICF, and we just gave them our last edits last week. And so ICF will be passing it to the Department of Health soon, and Department of Health does their due diligence, and it usually comes out within a few months after that last submission, and it's already gone through interagency review. That's what that kind of last review and comments were for.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And then a question for Paul Bernstein. He still on, Paul?
Yes.
Paul, you had mentioned in your testimony that the European Union is doing this now, and it's massively expensive. Can you elaborate a little bit about what's going on over there and why we should be doing this as a state?
So the European Union has essentially a cap and trade program on carbon emissions, and they are in the process of implementing a border carbon adjustment, which means that they will tax goods, imported goods, coming into the European Union based on their carbon content. And the carbon tax will be the difference between the exporting country to the EU, their carbon emissions policy or carbon tax, and the EU's. So for example, if the U.S. exports goods to the European Union, they'll be subject to a carbon tax because the U.S. has no carbon tax. So, but for the European Union to do this, they need to understand what are the carbon emissions embodied into the goods that they import. But you can imagine that this is extremely difficult. If you take an automobile, there's steel, aluminum, plastics, all sorts of goods that go into that car. And so to understand or to measure the carbon emissions involved in the production of those goods is extremely difficult. And so to ask Hawaii to do that, you can imagine it's monumental. But again, the European Union is doing it because they can implement trade policies just as the U.S. can implement trade policies, but Hawaii can't. So I don't understand why Hawaii would ever embark on such a policy.
All right, thank you, Paul.
Sure.
Okay. Okay, members, the chairs have conferred, and the decision is to defer this measure indefinitely to give UH's UHERO program more time to provide the results of their emissions inventory findings, and also Mr. Bernstein's testimony is well taken. And so that will adjourn the 1 o'clock agenda, joint agenda. Okay, folks, we are reconvening the 1 o'clock AEN agenda. Will we finish with SCR 52, SR 40? We finished, yeah. We'll move on to SCR 53, SR 41, requesting the Department of Ag convene an advisory commission to address certain issues to guide action and progress in the agriculture, aquaculture, and food systems industries of the state. And first up is Jacqueline Ambrose. She's in support, Department of Ag.
Good afternoon, Chair Gabbert, members of the committee. Brian Miyamoto, Department of Agriculture. The department has, well, we put down comments, but in fact, we have concerns about this, these results. We have four pages of miscellaneous concerns, a lot of which have to do with the amount of work that is going to be imposed upon the department's staff concerning, as well as the lack of, you know, guidance, clarity, specificity. The advisory committee of five members is to be selected by the Board of Agriculture Chair, Chair of the department, and it seems to be kind of not clear to the, seemed to come from the Ag census, so there's that lack of clarity. And the results do not define the expertise and skills that the members of the advisory commission are expected to have to effectively address the tasks requested of the advisory committee. And the department recommends, instead of the advisory committee with multiple tasks, that consideration be given to an informal gathering of broadly knowledgeable individuals involved in or with Hawaii agriculture be summoned on an occasional basis to discuss the effect of public investment and other government incentives in support of increasing local food self-sufficiency and exports. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Miyamoto, Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the committee. Brian Miyamoto here on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. You have a written testimony in support of these two resolutions. We do have some amendments that we are requesting, Chair. Our first is to increase, and in no way are we advocating for large working groups or committees or, in this case, a commission, but based on the top 20 agriculture commodities, the most recent is in 2022, we do believe that some commodities or sectors are left out of this commission. So we are asking for a list to include livestock, nursing and floriculture, herb, spices, basil, cilantro, lavender, eggs, coffee, and even seed corn, which is our top commodity. Our second request is that the commissions meet quarterly versus twice a year, and then finally, it doesn't say what the commission will report to or who, so we do suggest that the recommendations of the commission be submitted to the Board of Agriculture so they can make use with whatever data or information that the commission is able to come up with. So again, we do respectfully ask for these three amendments for these two resolutions. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Brian. Glenn Cagamita in support. Nancy Redfeather in support. Was that your testimony, sir? Anyone else wishing to testify on SCR 53 or SR 41, either online or in person? Members, any questions? No questions there? Hawaii Farm Bureau, question. Brian, what's your response to the DOA's request that these meetings should be more informal? And we've already heard your testimony that you prefer them to be quarterly instead of biannually. What is your...
Thank you, Chair, for the question. May I respond with the "uh-uh"?
Whatever works.
We understand the department's concerns. Again, there's so many pressing things that they need to do, and unfunded mandates are extremely difficult, and we understand it. Even our testimony is suggesting more meetings than what's currently in the resolution. So we do understand the concerns and the challenges, and we would prefer that if something like this is being asked of the department, that, like everything else, they're given the proper resources, the staffing and the funding in order to convene these, because although we have Zoom and it's great to do virtual meetings, meetings like this, which looks like there's a lot, there's a list of things that are being asked. So Farm Bureau would prefer face-to-face meetings, which would take time. There are costs, there are travel costs, there are even, you know, food and refreshments and other things that come along with these meetings. Does it need to be facilitated? So we do understand the challenge. Convenient and informal, absolutely. I think, you know, there are benefits for groups like this to meet, and in fact, Farm Bureau in its history did convene the Commodity Advisory Group, which was an informal gathering, it was not governmental, that did include a bunch of those that are listed and that we had suggested. Again, there's advantages to different groups and agriculture getting together to try to find common goals and values.
Okay, thank you, Brian. All right, moving on to SCR 69 and SR 57, requesting the Department of Ag to establish a Sustainable Food Systems Working Group. First up is Kili E. Nixon with the Office of Hawaiian Affairs.
Aloha, Chair, members of the committee. Kili E. Nixon from the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. We do support this resolution. We are requesting amendment to include a representative from the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. I will be available for any questions. Mahalo for the opportunity.
Thank you. Yung O from the Local Food Coalition. Yung here in support. Jacqueline Ambrose in support, Department of Ag.
Chair Gabbert, members of the committee. Brian Miyamoto, Department of Agriculture. The department has strong concerns. Again, somewhat similar to the previous Bill 50, concurrent resolution 53, there's a lot of staff work that has to be done in order to accomplish the, or to make ties into the food, the seven themes, I believe, and the 18 planning elements that were added The Department is concerned, well, to summarize, the Department is concerned that the working group and the plan do not become an academic exercise with no meaningful impact on the state's highest priorities of increasing the economic viability of existing agricultural businesses and assisting in the establishment of new ones in direct support of increasing local food self-sufficiency and exports. That concludes the testimony.
Okay, thank you. Lauren Zerbal from the Hawaii Food Industry Association on Zoom.
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Thank you, and support, Brian, okay, I've got Brian already. Yeah, Brian Miyamoto, Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Thank you, Chair, members of the committee. Brian Miyamoto here on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. You have our written testimony in support of the two resolutions. We do have some suggested amendments. First is, and this is in regards to the makeup of the working group, we are requesting that the interim dean, interim be stricken, we do have a permanent dean. Dean Rauwo is here now, so I think originally when this resolution and the bills were being drafted, it was the interim dean, Dean Anya. Secondly, we are requesting for ourselves and for the cattlemen to be included. This particular resolution does name individuals of organizations, so we are requesting the President of the Hawaii Farm Bureau and also the President of the Cattlemen's Council to be included as members of the working group. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Brian. Glenn Cagamita in support. BA McLintock in support, and Nancy Redfeather has comments. Members, any questions?
Question.
Senator DeCoy.
Hi, thanks for coming. So I know you guys had comments on this resul, but what would be expected to gain if the Sustainable Food System Working Group is established?
What would be gained, well, it would be a function of that advisory committee, too.
Yeah, if it was established, what is the gain?
The gain, the gain is, well, hopefully, what the goal, we would think, at least from the perspective of the department, is our concluding paragraph, is that it has to benefit our focus, which is agriculture production, producers, you know, everything else is added on to the backs of farmers, and to have all these other ideals and, you know, circumstances, you know, it's nice to have, but they follow, they follow the production of the farmers. And unless we have a really strong agricultural economy that's, you know, fully integrated, that pretty much calling the shots when it comes to legislation at any state legislature. Here in Hawaii, we're struggling to make these underutilized agricultural lands, so put that in agriculture production, but it requires farmers, that requires some control over costs, especially land, but since land is under such tremendous pressure for other uses.
So basically, what you're saying is, we're not California?
No, we are certainly not.
Got it, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
All right, moving on to the next measure, SCR 100, requesting the establishment of a working group to discuss agriculture-related issues. First up is Department of Ag.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the committee. Sharon Hurd, Department of Agriculture. We stand on our submitted testimony in support and note that this topic is getting, before this topic, this particular issue of ag theft and trespass baskets out of hand, it's really nice to see a resolution that appoints a member of the legislature to chair the committee, and maybe we can get some conclusions and actions to handle ag theft and trespass. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlotte Carter Yamachi from the LRB has comments. Nicole Galase on Zoom for the Hawaii Cattlemen's Council. Aloha, Nicole.
Thank you, Chair Gabbert, members of the committee. Nicole Galase on behalf of the Hawaii Cattlemen's Council. The cattlemen support this measure to bring together these agencies and producers. We really need to ensure that producing food for the community doesn't come with the fear that has been apparent lately. HPT would be willing and able to serve on this working group as written. Mahalo.
Thank you. Jacob Holcomb has comments from the Pig Hunters Association of Oahu. Brian Miyamoto from Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Aloha, Chair, members of the committee. Brian Miyamoto here on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. We are in support of this resolution. As you heard, the Chair of Department of Ag talk about the focus on agricultural crimes is important, and since the recent ag crimes briefing that your committee, along with the EET Committee held, there has been cooperation and engagement with Department of Law Enforcement. So we are requesting in our testimony for them to be included in this working group. They're actually investigating some of the recent ag crimes that have made the news, and going forward, they're looking at working with the ag sector to develop some technologies or to utilize some of the technologies to assist our farmers and ranchers. So we are requesting that they're included in the working group. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Jacqueline Ambrose in support. Glenn Cagamita in support. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure?
Good afternoon, Chairman Gabbert and distinguished member of the committee, Russell Homa, APEC Hawaii. I just wanted to share something that, you know, I was able to go to the APEC conference back in Seattle when they hosted in August, and as you know, State of Washington was hosting the Economic Forum and Women in Parliament as well. So I know at that time, the suit supply, you know, the U.S. Agriculture Secretary was there, and they had a nucleus of people. And matter of fact, I got some of the State of Washington, even my Alamoana University involved to do trade shows there. As you know, State of Washington has the east, the west coast, even Oregon, California has tremendous amount of suit supply chain for agricultural goods. As you know, we got Costco and Whole Foods that we bring in from State of Washington pretty much. So I think as forming this nucleus kind of committee, working group, I think we should coordinate with some of the other states like State of Washington. I know we have a good relationship with them right now, as well with California, because California had that APEC Conference of Leaders one in this past November, so I know. So I think we should actually go and move forward and get our resources together, and agriculture is very important for us. As you know, 98% of goods are brought in to Hawaii. I support this measure.
Thank you. Members, any questions? Okay, moving on to SCR 105 and SR 87, requesting the Hawaii Climate Change Mitigation and Adaptation Commission to conduct an educational program regarding the activities of individuals that contribute to climate change. First up is Ron Riley with Citizens Climate Lobby Hawaii in support. Jacqueline Ambrose in support. Lisa Bishop opposed. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? No testifier, so no question. So we will move on to the next measure, SR 87. Also, BA McLintock was in support on SR 87. Moving on to the next measure, SCR 129 and SR 111, requesting the Department of Ag to establish a Sustainable Food Systems Working Group to develop an interagency food systems plan. This was very similar to the one we just heard. SCR 69, there are some minor differences though, so if you'd like to testify, you're welcome to testify. First up, Department of Ag.
Chair, the department stands on its written testimony with strong concern.
Okay, thank you. Lauren Zerbal from Hawaii Food Industry Association on Zoom.
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Yung O, Local Food Coalition in person in support. Micah Munakata from Ulapono in support. Brian Miyamoto, Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Thank you, Chair. The Hawaii Farm Bureau stands on its written testimony in support.
Thank you. And Jacqueline Ambrose and Glenn Cagamita are also in support. All right, anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Members, any questions? Okay, let's move on then to SCR 132 and SR 114, requesting the Office of the Governor to convene a working group to plan for the remediation of PFAS in the state. First up is Ernie Lau from Board of Water Supply.
Chair Gabbert and members of the committee, my name is Kathy Mitchell. I'm with the Board of Water Supply. We stand on our written testimony in support of Senate Concurrent Resolution 132 and Senate Resolution 114 in support. We have a suggested amendment to add. We have a suggested amendment to add the newly established office of the Military and Community Relations Office within DEPET as a suggestion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Melody Aduha for the Environmental Caucus of the Democratic Party of Hawaii in support.
Good afternoon.
Oh, there you are. Says in person here, so I was looking for you here.
Yeah, I apologize.
That's all right.
Okay. Good afternoon, Chair, members of the committee. I feel that this is a very important measure and we would like to have it adopted. This is our second attempt at this one. And there's lots of reasons, such as the human health. As you all might know, it does create all kinds of serious health issues, increased cholesterol levels, decreased in vaccine response in children, et cetera. But in addition, we've got the environmental impact, which we are looking at. We'd like to have that looked at, and that would be the cause of water contamination, soil contamination, and air pollution. There's lots of ways that PFAS can get into our environment, and we really need a comprehensive plan, which is what we lacked right now. And we'd like to have community impact, and we'd like to look at that, and education is very important. Adopt this measure. Mahalo. Aloha.
Thank you, Melody. Next is John Bickel from the Americans for Democratic Action Hawaii in support. Abby Simmons from the Democratic Party of Hawaii in support. Lisa Bishop in support. Jacqueline Ambrose in support. Anyone else wishing to testify? Wait, on 114 as well. Melody already testified. Abby Simmons, Democratic Party of Hawaii, and also BA McClintock. Anyone else wishing to testify on these two measures? Members, any questions? Here you go. Now we'll move on to the next measures, SCR 133 and SR 115, urging every state agency that monitors environmental toxins and pollutants to follow certain procedural and substantive requirements for the establishment and modifications of environmental action levels. First up is Department of Health.
Good afternoon, Chair Gabbard, members of the committee. My name is Grace Simmons. I represent the Hazard Evaluation and Emergency Response Office. We are responsible for developing these environmental action levels, and I want to comment and say that we already have a robust process in place to develop these action levels. These are based on EPA regional screening levels, and we adapt it to Hawaii's needs. And so at this time, I think that we we are comfortable, we are we're also aware of the concerns that many of the community has on PFAS, but we're working with them to come up with numbers that are appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Melody Aduha from Environmental Caucus of the Democratic Party. Melody?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Thank you, members, for hearing this resolution. We feel very strongly about it and that we do need to have an opportunity for public input whenever it occurs that the Department of Health decides to modify the EALs. If I could just give you a case in point, recently in April of 2023, the Department of Health increased the EALs for PFOA, PFOA, which is a subsection of PFAS, in which the amount went from six parts per trillion to 12 parts per trillion, which would have been a 100% increase at a time when the EPA came out with its interim MCLs, maximum contaminant level, which is substantially less than what the Department of Health has issued as its EAL. It was 3,000 times more than what the EPA has suggested. Therefore, public input is is essential in order to make sure that the EALs are sufficient.
Thank you.
Please adopt this resolution. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Melody. BA McClintock in support. Anyone else wishing to testify on SCR 133 and SR 115? Members, any questions? Moving on, SCR 178 and SR 154, urging the state to prohibit the introduction of biocontrol agents that might threaten economically important forage grasses, grass species. Chelsea Arnott from the DLNR.
Aloha, Chair Gabbard, Senator Rhodes, Chelsea Arnott, on behalf of the Department of Land and Natural Resources and also program support for the Hawaiian Invasive Species Council. The department respectfully opposes this measure. We the process for identifying and testing and eventually releasing biocontrol agents in Hawaii is very stringent. It takes a really long time to not only identify a biocontrol agent or natural enemy to address a weed or pest here, but also to get that released. And I just want to mention that in 2022, the Pacific Ecological Security Conference put together a paper. It's titled "The Pacific Biocontrol Strategic Action Plan." And in this, they mentioned that in addition to New Zealand, Australia, Hawaii have researched, tested, and introduced natural enemies to target more than 100 weeds, 220 pest species. And of the 350 host-specific natural enemies that were introduced to manage weeds and pests, no biological control agent has shifted from their weed or pest host or negatively impacted other species or the environment. So mahalo for the opportunity. I'm here for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Department of Ag.
Thank you, Chair Gabbard. Senator Rhodes, my name is Darcy Oechi, Hawaii Department of Agriculture Plant Pest Control Branch. My apologies for the apparent eagerness in providing testimony on this bill, on this resolution. The department stands on its testimony in strong support of this language. We do note that as part of our regulatory process, there is a prohibition of sorts until the Board of Agriculture renders a decision along with the for importation. Any type of importation to occur would also have to have concurrent consent from the U.S. Department of Agriculture's permitting program before any biological control agent could be released in Hawaii. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, and I will be available for questions.
Thank you, Darcy. Nicole Galase, Hawaii Cattleman's Council, Zoom.
Thank you, Chair Gabbard, members of the committee. I'm Nicole Galase on behalf of the Hawaii Cattleman's Council. Cattlemen are in strong support of this measure. And while the study that DLNR brought up is encouraging, we are still concerned that any biocontrol introduced could have unintended consequences and issues with whole specificity because grasses are closely related. Ranchers also contain weeds and invasive species, but we urge that a holistic, more comprehensive approach is considered over biocontrol. There's a difference between managed and unmanaged lands, and almost 20% of Hawaii's lands are in pasture, which means that they are managed and they keep fire field loads down. If there are leases, it would be responsible, sorry, without these. We hope that the state can look to ranchers as an athlete when it comes to reducing fires. Cattle keep fire field loads down, ranchers invest millions into water infrastructure. This is all because they're managing the lands and producing beef as a viable business. A biocontrol could target important forage grasses and would devastate the industry, and these ecosystems services would no longer be available. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Larry Jeffs, Larry Jeffs Farms is in support. Alan Gottlieb from Ponoholo Ranch in support. Brian Miyamoto from Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Thank you, Chair. The Hawaii Farm Bureau stands on its written testimony in support.
Randy Cabral in support. Jacqueline Ambrose, Jimmy Greenwell, Gregory Friol, and Woody Child are in support. Britt Craven is opposed. BA McClintock is in support. Jimmy Gomes is in support. Woody Child is in support. Anyone else wishing to testify on 178 and 154? Okay, let's move on to SCR 191 and SR 163, urging the Department of Agriculture to adopt proposed amendments to Chapter 4-72, Hawaii Administrative Rules that provide important authorities for the department to prevent the spread of insects, diseases, and other invasive pests in the state. Chelsea Arnott for DLNR.
Aloha, Chair Gabbard, Senator Decoit, Senator Rhodes, Chelsea Arnott, on behalf of the Department of Land and Natural Resources. The department stands on its written testimony in support. These rule updates are really important to giving clear authority to the Hawaii Department of Agriculture to prevent and manage invasive species in the state. And I will mention that the Department of Agriculture has already started on this process. They just had their public hearing at the end of January, and our staff are working through the testimony from that. And so that process has already started. I'm here for any questions. Mahalo for the opportunity.
Thank you, Chelsea. Jacqueline Ambrose is in support. Stephanie Easley from Sea Gaps is on Zoom. Aloha, Stephanie.
Aloha, Chair Gabbard and members of the committee. My name is Stephanie Easley with Sea Gaps, and we are here in support of these resolutions. I want to add a couple of things to our written testimony. First, as set out in the resolutions, HDOA's proposed amendments to Chapter 72 were unanimously moved board at three notice and public meetings in early 2023. It was a joy to watch those meetings. HDOA's plant quarantine branch did such an amazing job. Not only was there no testimony in opposition to the Chapter 72 amendments, the Advisory Board, the Board of Ag, and the Small Business Regulatory Board were excited and thanked HDOA and particularly the plant quarantine branch for the amendments and all their hard work. It was just awesome. We hope HDOA can overcome the current hurdles and delays and get the rule amendments moving again. We also note that the amendments made to Section 150A-8 Hawaii Revised Statutes in the Ag Omnibus Bill do not conflict with the Chapter 72 amendments. If both are made effective and the legislature sees fit to continue moving the Ag Omnibus Bills forward, it would only strengthen Hawaii's ability to protect, to prevent the spread of invasive pests within the state. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Stephanie. Glenn Kagamida in support. Department of Ag.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the committee. My name is Jonathan Ho, Department of Agriculture Plant Quarantine Branch. We stand on our written testimony with some comments. And as prior testifiers have said, we are, you know, working through Chapter 72 to finalize that. And just want to note that we did comment that there's interim rules that were finalizing. They were signed actually by the Chair yesterday, and the press release just went out. So that's regarding managing LFa on the island of Oahu. Thank you. We're available for questions.
Nancy Redfeather is in support. Anyone else wishing to testify on 191 and 163? Members, any questions? Okay, so we'll move on to SCR 192 and SR 164, requesting the Office of the Auditor to conduct a performance audit of the Department of Ag's Plant Industry Division. First up, Department of Ag.
Good afternoon, Sharon Hurd, Department of Agriculture, Chair Gabbard, Senators Decoit and Rhodes. Sharon Hurd, Department of Agriculture, we stand on our submitted testimony. The department supports the audit provided that the resolution is amended as follows. The performance audit should be amended to a fiscal and performance audit, and the fiscal and performance audit should be on all parties, including HISC, HDOA, Plant Industry, Invasive Species Committees, and the Hawaii Ant Lab. As the question of performance involves all these agencies in the Hawaii Interagency Biosecurity Plan, the invasive species problem will not go away or be lessened unless these issues are addressed. The department welcomes the audit, but the audit will not be impactful unless there is clarity among the base plan and all the parties involved. All the parties in the Hawaii Interagency Biosecurity Plan with clearly defined roles will maximize the effectiveness in achieving the objectives of 158-51. The audit can offer recommendations for actions resulting from the resolution. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Office of the Auditor has comments. Jacqueline Ambrose in support. Lisa Bishop in support. Anyone else wishing to testify on 192 and 164? Members, any questions? Okay, moving on to the last two measures on the agenda, SCR 220 and SR 196, urging the Hawaiian construction industry to increase the recycling of construction and demolition debris and to expand the usage of recycled construction materials to the greatest extent First up is Melody Aduha from the Environmental Caucus of the Democratic Party.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the committee. Increasing the recycling of C and D debris and expanding the usage of recycled construction materials in the Hawaii industry can offer substantial benefits. Number one, reducing landfill waste through increased recycling of debris, and the state can eliminate nearly 2,000 tons of construction and demolition waste that are currently deposited into landfills each day. This helps conserve valuable land and reduce the environmental impacts of waste disposal. Number two, conserving resources. Recycling construction materials helps conserve natural resources by reducing the need for new materials. Three, economic benefits. The use of recycled materials can offer cost savings for builders and homeowners alike as they are typically more affordable than their newly manufactured counterparts. Number four, whoops, excuse me. Number four, reducing greenhouse gas emissions. The process of extracting and manufacturing new materials can produce significant greenhouse gas emissions. By using recycled materials, these emissions can be significantly reduced. Thank you very much, and I am available for questions.
Thank you, Melody. Jacqueline Ambrose is in support. Anyone else wishing to testify on 220 and 196? Members, any questions? Okay, we're ready to go, Senator Rhodes. We're going to decision making. Start off with SCR 53 and SR 41.
52 and 40?
What?
52 and 40.
Oh, you did that one, didn't you?
No, we didn't DM.
You didn't DM on that one? Okay, sorry.
Okay.
I feel so tired and so quiet.
All right, so on SCR 52 and SR 40, on the study on the percentages of ag lands being leased by the state, suitable for farming, being used for farming purposes, the chairs leased by the state, suitable for farming, being used for farming purposes, the chair's recommendation would be to amend the date for the department to submit a report to 20 days prior to the convening of the regular session, the 2027 session. It's currently, it's 2025, so we'll move that to the 2027 session. Okay, any concerns? So pass with amendments, chair votes aye.
Chair's recommendation on SCR 52 and SR 40 is to pass with amendments. Chair Gabbard votes aye. Vice Chair is excused. Senator Decoit?
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Senator Wa is excused. Measures adopted.
Thank you, members. Now SCR 53 and SR 41, chair's recommendation would be to pass with the amendments from the Hawaii Farm Bureau. We will include the representatives from livestock, nursery, floriculture, herb, which includes basil, cilantro, lavender, turmeric, et cetera, eggs, coffee, and seed corn. That's the first part of the amendment. Secondly, we will hold meetings on a quarterly basis. And third, specify that the recommendations from the committee will be submitted to the Board of Ag. Any questions or concern? Chair votes aye.
Chair's recommendation on SCR 53 and SR 41 is to pass with amendments. Chair Gabbard votes yes. Senator Richards is excused. Senator Decoit?
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Senator Wa is excused. Recommendations are adopted.
Thank you, members. On SCR 69 and SR 57, we're going to defer decision making on that one until Monday, April 1st at 1:01 PM in Room 224. We're still gathering information on that particular rezo. And then on SCR 100, requesting the establishment of a working group to discuss ag-related issues. As the lead introducer of this rezo, you may be surprised that I'm going to defer this indefinitely. The fact is, we need more than a working group, and we need action now to help our farmers and ranchers. So we're going to be using a different rezo to address this issue that we believe will be more impactful. It'll be SCR 164, which is a resolution for an ag crime pilot program that was introduced by my colleague on my right, Senator Decoit. It not only addresses illegal hunters, as this SCR 100 does, but it also includes all ag crimes. So for this reason, we're deferring this measure in favor of SCR 164, which we will be hearing next week with the JDC Committee. Okay? And then moving on to SCR 105 and SR 87, the chair's recommendation will be to pass as is. Any concerns? Chair votes aye.
Chair's recommendation on SCR 105 and SR 87 is to pass unamended. Chair Gabbard votes yes. Senator Richards is excused. Senator Decoit?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Senator Wa is excused. Recommendations are adopted.
Thank you, members. And then SCR 129 and SR 111 on the sustainable food systems. Again, because of the two resos are so similar, we're still working on this. We'll defer decision making until Monday, April 1st, 1:01 PM here in Room 224. Okay, then moving on to SCR 132 and SR 114, convening a working group on PFAS, the chair's recommendation would be to pass as is. Any questions or concerns? Chair votes aye. Senator Rhodes.
Chair's recommendation on SCR 132 and SR 114 is to pass as is. Senator Gabbard votes yes. Senator Richards is excused. Senator Decoit?
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Senator Wa is excused. Recommendations are adopted.
Thank you, members. Also, here we go, SCR 133 and SR 115, urging every state agency that monitors environmental toxins and pollutants to follow certain procedural and substantive requirements. Chair's recommendation would be to pass as is. Any concerns or questions? The chair votes aye. Senator Rhodes.
Chair's recommendation on SCR 133 and SR 115 is to pass as is. Chair Gabbard votes aye. Vice Chair Richards is excused. Senator Decoit?
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Senator Wa is excused. Recommendations are adopted.
Thank you, members. And then SCR 178 and SR 154, prohibiting the introduction of biocontrol agents. That one too needs some more work, so we'll defer decision making to April 1st at 1:01 PM in Room 224. Moving on to SCR 191 and SR 163, another one. Sorry, we need to defer decision making on this one as well until April 1st, Monday, 2024 at 1:01 PM in Room 224. Oh. And then as well, SCR 192 and SR 164 will also defer decision making until April 1st, 2024 at 1:01 PM in Room 224. And then the final measure, SCR 220 and SR 196, concerning the Hawaii construction industry to increase their recycling, recommendation will be to pass as is. Any concerns? Chair votes aye. Senator Rhodes.
Chair's recommendation, SCR 220 and SR 196 is to pass as is. Chair Gabbard votes aye. Vice Chair is excused. Senator Decoit?
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Senator Wa is excused. Recommendations adopted.
Thank you, members. And that concludes the 1 o'clock PM AAN agenda.